Good evening. Welcome to the January 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order and ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have quite a variety of new faces up on the horseshoe this evening. Councillor Zenati, of course, her last meeting was last week, so we're going to elect a new Vice Mayor today, just to let you all know. Councillor Clark unfortunately is home ill with a positive COVID test but doing okay. Otherwise, he would be here tonight. Mr. McNichol has changed places because of his getting over a cold, so we're taking all kinds of health discussions up here. And our city attorney is out on leave today, so we have Councillor Ewing filling in. Yeah. So anyway, just to introduce you all to all the new faces up here. At this point, we'll be on Item 3, the election of a Vice Mayor. With Councillor Zenati's departure, with Vice Mayor Zenati's departure, I would like to nominate Councillor Jaloski to fill the position of Vice Mayor.
And I would enthusiastically second that.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, Councillor Jaloski will now be known as Vice Mayor Jaloski. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve in that position. I think I'll leave and you can just take over. Will that work?
We need a question.
We won't have a quorum. All right. Item 4, on the consent docket. Any questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the consent docket is approved. Public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. I think that's just one of us, one here, and that's former councillor Pat Darlington, who's here to talk to us about the energy audit. Do you want to talk after the energy audit? Is that, was that your plan?
Yes.
Okay.
After Caleb does his presentation.
We can do that then. We'll wait till the Item 8, agenda item there. Okay. That takes us to Item 7, public hearings. 7A has received public comment regarding the request for a specific use permit for a medical marijuana dispensary at property addressed as 104 South Perkins Road, CC-23-14. Jaclyn Porter.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jaclyn Porter, presenting on behalf of the Planning Department, presenting the specific use for the new medical marijuana dispensary located at 104 South Perkins Road. The subject property is located near the intersection of South Perkins Road and East Virginia Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. Rib crib is located across the, across the way from South Perkins on the east side, and you can see the Walmart parking lot there to the northeast. Here's a street view of the subject property, looking west on, off of South, on South Perkins Road. As you can see, the proposed location is part of the commercial office space. It was once previously the location of family video. Here's an image of the 2030 comprehensive plan. The future land use maps are used to forecast desired uses in the community at the time of the adoption. The subject property is projected to be commercial use. The property is currently zoned commercial shopping and are required, and as a commercial shopping, medical marijuana dispensaries are required to obtain a specific use in a commercial shopping zoning. The applicants are here. If you have any questions, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
Councillors, any questions for staff? Thanks, Jaclyn. This time I will open the public hearing on this item. I don't have anyone sign up to speak. If the applicant would like to make a statement, I don't know if councillors have questions for the applicant.
I mean, if you have any questions.
Please, if you could just state your name for, and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Chris Beatty. I'm the owner and CEO of American Cannabis. If you have any questions for me, but I'd love to answer them for you, but we're just looking forward to, you know, being able to open up and have a nice, clean, well-running facility in your city.
Thanks, sir. Councillors, any questions? All right. Thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you.
This time I will close the public hearing and ask Jaclyn to come back up and let us know what the recommendation was.
Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Councillors?
Motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation on the item. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that specific use permit is approved. Takes us to Item 7B. Pursuant to 7, excuse, we'll start over. Pursuant to 11 OS Section 22-112 and 11 OS Section 22-112.4, the Stillwater City Council will conduct a hearing to determine whether the structure located at 638 East 14th Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, is dilapidated, defined in 11 OS Section 22-112(c) and abandoned, as defined in 11 OS Section 12, 22-112.4(e) on January 23rd, 2023, in the City Council Hearing Room. At said date and time, City Council shall make a determination as to whether said building is dilapidated and/or abandoned, as defined by the referenced statutes, and whether the order of, whether to order the abatement and removal of said structure and the assessment of all associated costs thereof to the owner of said property. Ms. Beth Ann Childs is here to assist us on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This, you may recall that Mr. Sorenson appeared at the last City Council meeting. He is here again. I can tell you, he has been working very well with the code officers, especially Code Officer Moore that's been assigned to it. He's made significant progress. They're having some things that have been painted. All of the brush has been cleared away. Additionally, he's begun replacing the roof. So it's staff's recommendation at this time that you table it to March 6th. February 13th would be the next regularly scheduled meeting, but our hope would be that everything would be done, or very close to done, by March the 6th. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councillors?
So we just need a motion to table? So motion to table Resolution Number CC-?
If you would table, and I'm sorry, I'm going to have you do it two different ways, if that's acceptable. If you would table the public hearing to March the 6th, the date certain, and then when you get to the resolution later on in the agenda, if you'll table that to March 6th as well.
Gotcha. So right now, we're just tabling the public hearing?
Yes, please.
So motion to table the public hearing to March 6th, or date certain?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table the public hearing under Item 7B to March 6th, 2023. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that item will be tabled until March 6th. That takes us to Item 7C. Pursuant to 11 OS Section 22-112 and 11 OS Section 22-112.4, the Stillwater City Council will conduct a hearing as to determine whether the structure located at 3033 East Peachtree Avenue in Stillwater, Oklahoma, is dilapidated, as defined in 11 OS Section 22-112(c) and abandoned, as defined in 11 OS Section 112, Section 22-112.4(e) on January 23rd. At said time, the City Council shall make a determination as to whether said building is dilapidated and/or abandoned, as defined by the referenced statutes, and whether the, whether to order the abatement and removal of said structure and the assessment of all associated costs thereof to the said property owner. Ms. Childs?
Thank you. What I would like to do is, I am asking council to approach, this was, this property frankly is not capable, the structure is not capable of remediation. And so I had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Sexton. He was finally able to get ahold of his client, who actually lives in Broken Bow. So at this time, with regard to the public hearing, I would respectfully submit the written official record that has been prepared. I don't think that there's any necessity to take any testimony. I believe that our agreement is that the council will pass the resolution, but give her 60 days to remove the structure. She actually has already retained someone, the personal representative, but I don't want to speak for him. Is that right?
That's correct. She already has someone hired to do this, but he's about 30 days out. So he said probably within about 30 days, 35 days, he will be on site to tear down the structure and haul off the debris.
Okay.
So the request would be that you go ahead and open the public hearing, see if there's, there are any comments. If not, close the public hearing and then approve the resolution.
Thank you, Beth Ann. This time I will open the public hearing on Item 7C. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone here to speak on the item? This time I'll close the public hearing, and we will take up the resolution later on the agenda. All right, that takes us to Item 7D. Item 7D pursuant to 50 OS Section 1 and following, 11 OS Section 22-121, Sections 18-64 through 18-74 of the Stillwater City Code of Ordinances and the Development and Engineering Codes of the City of Stillwater, including Chapter 35, Stormwater Quality and Management of the Stillwater Code of Ordinances. The Stillwater City Council will conduct a hearing to determine whether the property located at 1600 East 16th Avenue, as shown in the attached exhibit, constitutes a public nuisance as set forth in the statutory and code reference identified above. At said date, the City Council shall make a determination as to whether this property constitutes a public nuisance, as defined by the referenced statutes and codes, and whether to order the abatement of the property and assessment of all associated costs thereof to the owner of said property. Ms. Childs?
Thank you, Mayor. This is one that generated a considerable amount of discussion and presentation at the last City Council meeting. One thing that I would like to note is that our staff, our code officers, and in particular our floodplain manager, who's standing right here with me, has done a remarkable job of working with the developers in an attempt to get this resolved. Even as recently as Friday, they went back out there, and the owners of the property, they engaged the services of Gossen Associates, and they have begun to construct the detention pond. Of course, it is pretty wet out there, and it's going to be a little bit difficult to complete it at this time. The council originally had requested a very, very short timeframe for resolution, and so the resolution that you will be considering later on does provide for a 30-day timeframe, except before you open the public hearing, I believe that Mr. Sexton, who has done a good job as well keeping his client on task with regard to this, does have a request.
At this time, we, my client would request that you all pass this 30 days. They do have the detention pond formed out there. They have ordered the overflow pipe that needs to be installed on the detention pond. We haven't got it. It's been ordered for about 20 days, 25 days. We hope to get it in the next 10 days. And then, once we get that out there, then we can go out, install the overflow pipe, finish up the detention pond, and then hopefully be able to get it approved by the city. So that's where we are. We've done quite a bit of work in terms of the dirt work. We've hired North Central Construction. They've been on site for several days, working on this. So we're pretty close to being done. If the council would consider passing it for 30 days, I think it will be completely done.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Sexton, you anticipate that the work will be completed in that 30-day period?
Yes, yes.
So if we were to actually pass the ordinance and give you 30 days, would that be?
That would be acceptable. I'd just ask Ms. Childs if we could just pass it for 30 days, but either way, I think it will be done. The only thing that's stopping us from finishing right now is just we don't have the overflow pipe.
Yeah.
It's been ordered, but it's custom, so has to come in before we can get that installed.
Okay.
But North Central's ready as soon as that gets there to finish up the work.
Okay. Thank you. Councillors, any other questions for council?
And it truly is council's pleasure. I know that the neighbor is here. If you do elect to go ahead and do the public hearing, you may want to, I'm sure you'll want to hear from him, but, and then we'll just admit the written record as well.
Sure.
So it's really council's discretion, but, but to their credit, they have gotten a lot done.
From staff's perspective, is the work that's ongoing right now sufficient to abate the issue?
According to the engineer's design, it should function properly. It should slow the discharge rate and contain a lot of the sediment, so hopefully it will solve the problem. It is a temporary solution. It's only going to be in place until the development is completely built out, and then it'll be removed, so.
What, how long will it take for you to be able to figure out if it's working? I mean, will we wait for rainfall and see if it, if it works?
Essentially, yeah. Based on the hydrology performed by Gossen Associates, it should function, but with any model used, there's always the chance that it's, it's going to fail.
Okay. Okay, well, I, I mean, we spoke about this last meeting, and, you know, given the timeframe that we've already been dealing with this issue, we were not in a great, didn't, wasn't a, the fact that we got to this meeting, I think, was another extension. So at this point, I think I will open the public hearing to take comment. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if there are folks who are here who would like to speak on the record regarding Item 7.
I think Mr. Bradbury was signed up electronically.
Yes, he is. No, Ray Bernard.
Ray Bernard, sorry.
Yes, signed up for this item.
Ray Bernard, 1602 South Payne. My property is south of this. So yeah, they've been there. They hauled in 12 loads of dump truck dirt, and they built a bowl that no water's going to run into. The inlet to this pond that they built is the outflow from the original detention pond. So maybe one-fourth of this eight acres is going to go into this pond. The rest of it's going to come just as fast as it always has, and you really don't need to do, wait for rain. Just go out there and walk and look at the gullies, and see how many of them lead to this detention pond, and how many of them lead to the creek. It's going to be inadequate. They're going to have to build a dam from the detention pond, curved around to match the topography on the south side to keep that water from coming off and coming past. They're also going to have to put some rip rap in there. And I've been pretty patient and talked to a lot of people, and just before the meeting, Norren came over politely, said Zach told me they're doing some work out there. I said, "Yeah, but it's not going to catch any water." And he said, "That's what Zach said." And now Zach gets up there and says, "Maybe this is going to be adequate, and let's wait for rain."
Thank you, sir. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. Anyone else here to speak on this item? This time I will close the public hearing, and we will address the resolution later in our agenda.
And if I could say one more thing, assuming that the council does elect to go ahead and move forward with the resolution, they will only, in response to his comment, in the event that it's not remedied within the 30 days, then the resolution does give the city manager authority to move forward and abate the nuisance as necessary. So I think that's very positive.
Thank you, Beth Ann. This time we'll move to Item 7E, pursuant to 11 OS Section 22-112 and 11 OS Section 22-112.4. The Stillwater City Council will conduct a hearing to determine whether the structure located at 2110 West Sherwood, Stillwater, Oklahoma, is dilapidated, as defined in 11 OS Section 22-112(c) and abandoned, as Section 11 OS 20, Section 22-112.4(e) on January 23rd. At said date and time, the Stillwater City Council shall make a determination as to whether said building is dilapidated and/or abandoned, as defined by the referenced statutes, and whether to order the abatement and removal of said structure and the assessment of all associated costs thereof to the owner of said property. Ms. Childs?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that I would like to mention is, the owner, current owner of the structure actually resides in Talaqua, but as I mentioned previously, her husband has been ill, and they have been in Houston for, for quite some time. I have tried to contact her by phone and by email, but obviously she's been concerned with other matters, but the code officer was able to reach out to the individual, a local realtor, who has been trying to purchase the property. Of course, no progress has been made. She did retain the services, actually, a couple of months ago, of a yard company, so they at least were keeping it, it mowed and a little bit more picked up than it had been in the past. But what I would request is that you go ahead and conduct the public hearing and then adopt the resolution. However, the request is that the resolution give them 90 days in order to rehabilitate or dilap, or tear down the structure.
Is your understanding with the purchaser who's looking at the property, what is their plan for the property?
Their plan is to demolish the structure. Right. I'm going to let him speak.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I did talk to the realtor this morning, and he said these actions that we have been taking have kind of prompted the owner to move ahead. They do have a few title issues they have to get resolved, but basically, this is, it's going to happen. He is going to take possession of the property. They've got the deal worked out. They're just trying to get this stuff finalized so that he can move on and take care of the property. So it's pretty much going to happen. It's just a matter of getting those little incremental things done.
So us moving forward with the action would help make sure that this continues to move forward?
Yeah, I think that would be a good motivator to make sure it doesn't backslide again.
Thank you. All right, at this time I will open the public hearing on Item 7E. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this one. Is anyone here to speak on Item 7E? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll take up the resolution in just a bit. Thank you, Beth Ann. Appreciate your help. All right, that takes us to Item 8, general orders. I'm sorry.
Could I ask that you consider calling number nine out of order so that Beth Ann can be here for the vote?
Oh, sure.
And then leave, since the city is paying her hourly to be here.
That's an excellent point. And who knows how long this next item's going to take, right? That's a good point. We'll move down to Item 9, resolutions. Actually, I'm going to skip to Item 9B, which corresponds to Item 7. Well, it doesn't. Item 9B is for the property at 2110 West Sherwood, which is the last item we just discussed. Councillors, questions, comments, or a motion on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2023-2.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I am on the wrong resolution.
Yep.
Yep. How about a motion to adopt Resolution CC-2022-36 amended?
That would be the resolution declaring the Stillwater, excuse me, a resolution of the City of, let's start over. Resolution 2022-36 amended is a resolution of the Stillwater City Council declaring the structure located at 2110 West Sherwood Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, dilapidated and abandoned, and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community, and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to 11 OS Section 22-112. This resolution does include a 90-day period, after which the city manager will take action on the, on the structure. And we had a motion to adopt the resolution, and we had a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, Resolution CC-2022-36 amended is adopted. All right, Item 9C is Resolution 2022-37, which is a resolution of the Stillwater City Council declaring the structure located at 638 East 14th Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, dilapidated and abandoned, and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community, and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to 11 OS Section 22-112. Beth Ann, remind us which property this one's for.
This is the one that you're going to table to March the 6th, please.
This one, staff is recommending table until March the 6th, because progress is being made on repairs to the structure. Is there a motion on council's recommendation, or, excuse me, on staff's recommendation?
Motion to table Resolution Number 2022-37.
To?
To March 6th.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to table Item 9C to our March 6th meeting. Please vote. That resolution will be tabled until March 6th. Item 9D is Resolution 2022-38, which is a resolution of the Stillwater City Council declaring the structure located at 3033 East Peachtree Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, dilapidated and abandoned, and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community, and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to 11 OS Section 22-112. Beth Ann, just a quick reminder?
Yes, sir. If you would adopt or approve the resolution with the 16-day timeframe.
Counsel?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2022-38. For, and what was our timeframe?
It's 60 days.
60 day.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolution 2022-38 is adopted with a vote of three to zero. And then, Item 9E is Resolution Number CC-2022-39, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council declaring the real property located at 1600 East 16th Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community, and ordering the property to be abated pursuant to 50 OS Section 11. This is the Silverton Estates property that we were just discussing. I'll just comment personally on the item to say, we have given these folks quite a bit of time. It's, it's positive to hear that there is progress being made, that hopefully will abate the issue, and I think it would be appropriate for us to adopt the resolution, giving them 30 days to finish those up. And if it doesn't work, as the neighbors are concerned it might not, then we'll fix it ourselves and charge the landowners for the fix. So my, I will move from the chair that we adopt Resolution CC-2022-39.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, Resolution CC-2022-39 is adopted, and it does include a 30-day window for those repairs to be finished. All right, so we'll jump back up in the agenda. Is Paul here? Paul's here. Why don't we just finish on Item 9, with 9A. Resolution 9A is Resolution 2023-2, a resolution acknowledging city council authorization and approval for the submission of an application for fiscal year 2023 bipartisan infrastructure law funds administered by the FAA for airport infrastructure improvements at Stillwater Regional Airport and approval of associated budget amendment. Mr. Prigle.
Good evening. I bring before you tonight a resolution with a budget amendment also attached, and this resolution will authorize the Stillwater Regional Airport to make application for round two of the bipartisan infrastructure law funds that are available to the airport. This year's allocation is an amount of $1,019,003. And of this, this is, like any other grant, it comes with a 90-10 match, and so the 10% portion for city obligation is $113,223. I'll remind council that May 2nd of '22 was the first allocation, and we have a total of five years of allocations coming to us, and each year they'll announce the amount, we'll bring a resolution and apply. But all of these funds have, at this point, been planned to go towards the design and construction of our new commercial terminal, and also the design, siting, and construction of a new air traffic control tower at the airport. And so we've started the design of the terminal. We've also, we begin siding this week, actually, for the tower, and so these funds will continue for those efforts. We still have quite a bit more design for both to do. And so by adopting this resolution, you'll be authorized in the airport to make the application, authorizing the mayor to sign all documents, and it will also approve the budget amendment, which will populate the remaining necessary to meet our 10% obligation. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councillors?
It's always just exciting when there's money to do what we want to do, right? That's always a good thing. It's, I really, kudos to staff for, I mean, I know we didn't know this particular funding was coming available in the infrastructure bill, but it's great that we've been planning and thinking about it and have projects that will really be appropriate and intentional for the community and really help the development out there. So kudos to you all for your, the work that you've done to get us ready to spend these dollars.
All right, absolutely. Is there a motion on the recommendation, or on the resolution? Excuse me.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2023-2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that resolution is adopted. Thank you, Paul. I spent last week in Washington DC talking to people about grant money, and 90-10 FAA money is- I spent last week in Washington DC talking to people about grant money, and 90-10 FAA money is the gold standard. It's exciting to be able, continue to get that here. All right, now we will jump back up to item A, general orders. Item 8A is receive Johnson Controls' presentation of the investment-grade energy audit findings and consider authorizing staff to proceed when negotiating a performance contract. And Melissa Reams will fill us in.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. I want to take you back to June 13th of 2022, and Mr. McClenny was here with us that evening and presented the path forward to getting an investment-grade audit and potentially partnering with an energy service company to replace some of our aging infrastructure. The Renewable Energy Task Force was instrumental in working with this, through this process and in selecting the company to, to perform the investment-grade energy audit. And in its essence, what we are proposing this evening is that we repurpose what I call operation and maintenance dollars into debt service. Because in theory, if you get new equipment, the latest and greatest, the most energy efficient, your maintenance and operating costs should be less, and you can take those dollars and use that to pay down the debt on the purchase of the new equipment. So kind of keep that in the back of your mind as we're talking this evening about a path forward. The company that was selected during the request for proposal was Johnson Controls, and they, we have four representatives from the company here tonight. They have been with our staff off and on for probably a good six months, looking at our operations, looking at our processes, looking for those efficiencies that can be gained. And what they are presenting to you tonight, I kind of look at as phase one. There are some really interesting projects in the future that, that would be a little more intense for us, but they have exciting possibilities as well. And so let me introduce to you the JCI team, and it's led this evening by Caleb Camerounis. He's a senior account executive with Johnson Controls. Along with him is Z Yaw, and Z is the principal engineer. Z has been up here on his hands and knees digging and looking at all, all of our systems, trying to figure out what we can do better. And by the way, Z is an OSU alum, so he's, he's home in Stillwater. Tiffany Duncan is the area sales manager, Tiffany's been with us since the interview process. Tiffany is one of those remote workers, she, she lives in St. Louis, but she is on every Zoom call with us, and she is here with us more often than not. And lastly, Maureen Blaze, and I think Maureen is one of those special people that, that others gravitate to and want to perform for. She is vice president of Sustainable Infrastructure House down in Dallas, and she wanted to be with us this evening as we explore the opportunities available to us in the area of efficiencies and, and gaining effectiveness through replacement of aging infrastructure. So I'm gonna turn this over to Caleb, and he has got a presentation for you this evening. Then after Caleb concludes, Pat Darlington has asked to speak on behalf of the Renewable Energy Task Force to you. And so that'll be our presentation, and then we'll be open for questions moving forward.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, Caleb, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor Joyce, council members, Mr. McNichol, Mrs. Reams. So my name, like Melissa says, Caleb Camerounis, I'm here with Johnson Controls' Sustainable Infrastructure Team. And like she said, I've been the primary point of contact for the city, working with city management, the department heads, and the facilities teams.
I want to get that mic just a little higher for you there.
Is that better? There you go. Okay. Working with the facilities teams to put together this project. And what I really want to focus on tonight is why we're here. So Melissa just gave a little bit of the background, and I want to dig in on that just a little bit, and then get into how can Johnson Controls help the city of Stillwater? And then why does this project matter? Just because we can do it, doesn't mean that it actually matters. Or just because we can do it, doesn't mean that we should, so let's focus on why does this project matter? So over a year ago, the city staff began, or city management was working with the department heads and the facilities teams, and going over different facilities and started to see some common challenges that were being presented across town. And they were really represented by limited revenue sources but increasing costs. So the amount of money that the city has at its disposal is set, but the cost were starting to increase. And the first problem that we started to see was in maintenance. So not being able to take care of our equipment the way that we need to take care of the equipment. And that led into failing infrastructure. If we're not able to take care of it the way that we need to, then we're gonna start having problems with the equipment. And it started to snowball. And after the equipment started to fail, we started looking at how are we going to fund equipment replacement? How are we going to take care of this equipment? But having a problem with funding the capital improvement plan. So you can see it's logical that snowball rolling a little bit. And then city management had the task of coming up with the plan for how are we going to address these overarching challenges? How are we gonna come up with a plan to address all of these challenges in one fell swoop? How are we going to address this? And then how are we going to address this project without any money? And that sounds like a crazy idea, but here we are, and we're talking about a solution to that problem. It's been absolutely fantastic working with your team, and I'm happy to say that in a partnership with Johnson Controls, leveraging guaranteed savings that enable new funding source for the much-needed citywide upgrades is an answer to that problem. So in implementing this project, we're able to drive immediate reduction in operations and maintenance. We're able to drive cost reduction in repairs in energy and capital expenses. And that enables us to create a more stable and predictable, long-term operational and capital budget. In the short term, it alleviates the needs for emergency upgrades, and then helps preserve capital to devote it to where the city needs it most. Almost in a parallel path that the city was working on that project, the Renewable Energy Task Force was working on the Energy Action Plan. And what I really like about the Energy Action Plan was the challenge from the Renewable Energy Task Force to the city to lead in Oklahoma by example. I love Oklahoma, and I'm not originally from here, but I think it's the greatest place in America, I say it all the time. And I really resonate with that, right? I, I think that a lot of us could benefit from that challenge of let's lead in Oklahoma by example. And right with that, the Energy Task Force, or the Renewable Energy Task Force said, let's focus on efficiency first in that leadership. And this project gives us the ability to set the example in Oklahoma by achieving financial stewardship, by achieving financial responsibility while mitigating risk, focusing on the areas of town where we know that there is equipment failure, significant equipment failure coming, and also focusing on energy efficiency. So how do we actually make all of this happen? Well, over 20 years ago, Oklahoma passed legislation that allows this mechanism and controls it, puts form to it, requires things of Johnson Controls. And that enables the creative financing structure that local governments can use to accelerate energy efficiency and infrastructure upgrades through energy and operational savings. And Johnson Controls guarantees the performance of this contract. So if the contract does not perform, if the savings are not actually materialized, Johnson Controls is on the hook to ensure that that debt service is able to be paid. Oklahoma State University has been utilizing a partnership with Johnson Controls through this exact same mechanism since 2006, over 11 different phases of work, and saving more than $48 million. Digging in a little bit deeper on exactly how this model works, if you can see the screen, you've got your current operational budget, the amount that the city spends in order to just run the city. And what we're focusing on is increasing efficiency, and in increasing that efficiency, we create energy savings and operations and maintenance savings. And all we're going to do is redirect those savings to the areas of need around town that are causing risk. So the impact that this project's gonna have, I'm really proud of this project, excuse me, and the work that we've put together with the different city teams that have worked on this with us. And first and foremost, we're going to work on interior lighting. So there's over 450,000 square feet of facility that we're going to replace all the lighting in with LED. Street lighting, there's over 4,300 street and security lights that we're also going to upgrade to LED across town. And in the municipal building and the library, a comprehensive HVAC replacement, taking care of those systems. Water conservation measures and building envelopes, and we're gonna reduce the amount of water that's used in the facilities and make sure that the buildings don't leak. And finally, large water meter and water typing, making sure that we're capturing more revenue for the city with more accurate meters. So this, this is a lot to absorb in one slide, but I'm gonna walk through it, and we're gonna walk through it together, and it's gonna be easy to understand after we're done. So if you look down at the bottom, the budget for the energy and infrastructure project is just over $13.5 million, financed over a 20-year period with an estimated effective interest rate of 3.75%. And the columns that I really want to pay close attention to are the columns that are highlighted in blue, all the way down. So the total annual payments column is made up of the first column is your debt service, and then the annual verification service, that is where Johnson Controls is actually required by law to prove that we are meeting the utility savings that we guaranteed. Those two combine for the total annual payments. And then the second blue column of total savings is made up of the utility savings that we're guaranteeing, that water revenue that we were talking about with the meters that we're going to increase, and the annual operations and maintenance saving. So the annual operations and maintenance saving, when you address pieces of equipment that was limping along and you were having to devote resources to keep it limping along, there's savings there after you replace it, and that's what those are. All three of those categories combine and make up the total savings. And then the last column of annual net cash flow is the difference between the total annual payments and the greater-than-that total savings. And each year with this model, we're anticipating $49,000 of annual net positive cash flow back to the city for executing this project.
Could I ask a question about some of the savings? For instance, the utility savings, and I'm gonna admit I don't know a lot about how, how those things are calculated, but given the difference and the variation in sometimes weather circumstances in the years, how do you determine the utility savings from one year to the next?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't mind repeating the question, so the increase in utility savings?
Yeah, just, just out of curiosity, given, given the difference in what happens from, from one year to the next with some of our freezes and things like that and snowstorms, how do you calculate a utility savings?
The utility savings are calculated by energy units. So we, kilowatt hours for electricity, and terms for gas, and water obviously is gallons. So we work with the cities, there's a baseline that we establish, is the data that was collected from the city facilities. Those data was collected, and we apply, we calculated the energy savings in energy units, and then we apply the rates that was provided by the city to those rates. And the savings that you see in this cash flow was escalated on average about 3% each year. Is that, is that helping?
So I guess if, my question is, and I'm, I'm probably not doing a good job of asking this.
Sure.
So for instance, if we calculated the baseline as of FY '21, where we had our ice storm?
Sure.
Then it seems like savings would be fairly easy to achieve. So I guess what I'm asking is how do you normalize?
Right.
Accounting for all the different types of weather we can have.
Good question, so we collected about three to six years of data, but we decided to use 2021 as our baseline data, and there's reason for it, to your point. Because those were, 2020 was not a good baseline year because of COVID. So we use the most recent data, and 2021, we have a software program that we actually use to account up for those weather patterns. So we accounted for those, and we selected 2021 as the baseline year. So those were being selected just for that reason, if that makes sense.
But you have things that account for the anomalies in terms of weather?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. So, so those were accounted for in our, we call it the established baseline. And obviously then we calculated the energy units, then we applied the rates to those energy units. Hopefully that makes sense.
Yes, it does, thank you very much.
Did you have anything else?
No, just the weatherization patterns are taken account for.
Thank you.
All right, so why this project matters, why does this make a difference? So in working with city management, something that has been hammered home time and time again was the need for financial stewardship, and let's be responsible with the funds that we have. So major compliments to the city management on hammering that home, and let's make this a priority in this project. So number one, the capital cost avoidance and budget stabilization. So the idea is, we know the equipment that exists, we know that it has surpassed its life expectancy, and we know that failure is en route. The library has already started to see significant failure in replacements over time. There was a failure this past summer at the municipal building with one of the, one of the chillers on the roof. So the idea is, can we take care of those problems now instead of waiting when a problem is more expensive to solve that problem? And by doing that, we're able to stabilize the budget. And new funding sources with no new taxes, and those critical upgrades with capital contribution back to Stillwater. So putting more money back into the general fund for executing the project. Smarter Stillwater, so the connected assets, enabling the smarter and safer city, and those assets that communicate back to the teams that are responsible for maintaining the equipment. They know when there's failure, they know when there's a problem. Increasing efficiency and being able to take care of those problems proactively instead of reactively. And reducing the risk that the city has by addressing those critical infrastructure needs now. And lastly, community and sustainability. So when we partnered with the Renewable Energy Task Force and city management to begin to put this project together, oh, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. So when city management and the Renewable Energy Task Force started to work on this project, and they brought us in as their partner, and we put this project together, now Stillwater has the ability to drive more innovation with enhanced community engagement. Some of the goals that they put out, that the Renewable Energy Task Force put out that we're able to achieve with this project is a greenhouse gas reduction or an energy consumption reduction of 30% in facilities by 2025, and a 12% reduction in water consumption. So finally, I'm proud of this project, I've really, really enjoyed my time with Mr. McNichol and Ms. Reams, with Mr. Roger and James, and some of the folks that couldn't be here, Mr. John McClenny, and unfortunately Becky Taylor, who decided to take her career somewhere else, but, and Lauren Smith. So the teams that we've worked with to put this project together, and I'm excited to actually Councillors?
You wouldn't mind, Mayor, if we let Mrs. Darlington come up and speak, and then we can maybe take questions?
I would be happy to have Dr. Darlington come speak.
Okay. Pat Darlington, 1806, North husband, Stillwater. Thanks for this time. I really have enjoyed Johnson Controls since the minute they walked in the door with the R E F T interview. And this, I'm speaking for the whole R E F T, R E T F team. The minute we walked in, their enthusiasm, passion, knowledge, previous, I mean prior work, getting to know all of us in the room on the team was just amazing. And I think they apply that type of work ethic and personality and commitment to excellence to their general work as well as their relationships with others. And of course, you know, one of my highest values is relationship. And if, you know, Johnson Controls could be a partner with us on a similar level as with OSU for over 11 years and $48 million of savings, we really want to have a good relationship starting off. And I can go through the, all the different things that the Renewable Energy Task Force really wants beyond this. But let's just get this started and do a good job on this. I think we will all be, you will all be as excited as the R E T F to be working with Johnson Controls.
Have you guys been involved in the back and forth and talking about the projects?
Not really. They have just spent so much time with the council, I mean with the staff, that that's hard to do. But I have personally met with them on occasion, and it's, again, their enthusiasm and commitment to Stillwater, even though it's not their home, has been amazing. Good people.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I do have a few questions. Does anybody want to go first? I like to go last.
I think one of the things I was thinking as we started the presentation tonight, sometimes when we're making council decisions and we've got a task for, a community task force that's working on behalf of the community, it may be helpful to go back and remember kind of what the decision to engage Johnson Controls was and kind of what the bigger project was. I don't know if Melissa or if Johnson Controls wants to kind of just remind us, right, we're talking about like city facilities and what in those facilities we're talking about, just to kind of reengage folks that might be listening or thinking as we're making decisions and talking as a council, just kind of give us that big picture.
The whole RFP process within ESCO was an outgrowth, I believe, of some of the recommendations from the Renewable Energy Task Force. And one of the primary goals was to get an investment-grade energy audit. In working with our grants manager, Shelley Crines, that's one of the checkboxes that we have to have on some of these grants that we're going after. So kind of dual purpose. And throughout that process, Johnson Controls, even though they were identifying issues that we've been aware of for a long time, they also came to the table with some out-of-the-box financing strategies. And Finance Director Kristy Cluck and I have really worked through this. We sat through a briefing the other day with Zee and Caleb about how we are going to determine what are the benchmarks. And to your point, Councillor Hawkins, it is units. They've monetized the dollars for discussion this evening, but it is going to be units of, you know, kilowatts, gallons, just as Zee said, and we're going to apply those existing tariffs. Well, as two accountants putting their heads together, Mrs. Cluck and I were like, okay, well, it could go one way or the other. That $49,000 that you see over here in this very far-left corner, we look at that as kind of our contingency, if you will. Because depending on how the PCE, the PCAs and the, you know, the rates fluctuate, again to your point, Councillor Hawkins, that is going to impact savings. And so, you know, going into it with our eyes open a little bit more and asking some additional questions, I think we're going to be very informed consumers on this type of out-of-the-box financing that we're thinking of. But if nothing else happens this evening, we are going to get that investment-grade audit out of the process, and it will aid in our grant writing and hopefully grant-getting process.
But I guess, I guess I was thinking even bigger picture, Melissa.
Okay. Well, help me get there.
Right, so we have our Renewable Energy Task Force, right? We're looking at creating a more sustainable community. And as a part of that, we were looking at different grants. I think just kind of going back to that original conversation, it's just helpful to remind us why we're talking about this and maybe making decisions about it. So, right, trying to build a more sustainable community, looking at these grant opportunities for maybe energy efficiency block grants and things like that, and kind of this audit comes as a part of that.
Right.
I think just, but what are we looking at? Like what kinds of, can you just maybe, what facilities? You say across the city, but you're not looking at private facilities, you're looking at our public facilities, you're looking at city-owned buildings, you're looking at our HVAC systems, you're looking at our water usage, you're looking at our electricity usage, our, all the things that would go into, from an efficiency, energy efficiency perspective specifically, right? I think just a reminder that that's kind of where we're going with this.
Absolutely. And again, back to what Caleb led with, is we want to lead by example. So as government, if we lead and we start down this path of efficiency and savings, does that encourage our citizens to follow suit? And we would like to think that it does. The buildings that we are looking at within our purview is here at City Hall. And having sat through a low chiller summer, it got pretty hot in my office, you know, so that equipment is aging out. It's 20-plus years old. And we're looking at the library. And again, the library has a heat pump system that still today is the type of system we need, it's just aged out. It's probably 25 years old. I forget when that library came on board.
Yeah, so I think, right, it's this idea, the conversation we're having, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. It's kind of this coming together of operations and maintenance and our requirements and responsibilities for our city-owned property and buildings, in addition to trying to lead by example and to be a more energy-efficient and sustainable.
So we're becoming a better steward of the assets.
So where these come together. And that's kind of what the presentation was today, right?
You finally got me there.
Yes, no, I just wanted to make sure. The background is hard, we just, it's been quite a while since we had the initial conversation, and I think it can sometimes, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how many people listen at home, but if they are listening at home, it's just, I think, important to give them some background to really understand what, how we got here, bigger picture conversation and kind of where we might be going. I guess, that being said, I also am very hopeful that we can lead by example. I think other things that are interesting to me in that is that we're seeing sometimes not just leading by example, but the opportunity for private sector folks to invest in our community based on ESG-type items like this. So leading by example could potentially bring more investment in our community from the private sector, which I think is really exciting as well. Companies that have these requirements of themselves want to locate in communities that are also doing these types of things, so.
And I think if you remember back to the presentation that Mr. Williams gave for progressive development, he is going to, in that new facility, incorporate some solar energy. And it's not going to, you know, it's certainly not going to fuel the whole facility, but it is going to help along those lines. So I think to your point, there is an example right there of already the city leading by example and we have a follower.
Yeah. One of the questions that I had, I feel like it might be a stupid question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do the utility savings, is that different for us because we are a community power city?
If you'll remember, we're a full requirements customer of Grand River Dam Authority. So we buy every little ion, I guess, ion, is that right, Zee? Ion of power, we buy from GRDA. So our bill each month is, I don't know, $2 million, so throw that out there. Then we sell back all the generation that we make, it gets sold back through the system to GRDA and ultimately to the Southwest Power Pool. So yes, these things will have an impact. Our bill, in my, in the back of my mind intuitively, our bill should go down because we shouldn't have to buy as much power.
So we will actually, I was wondering as we were going through that presentation, if we would actually realize those savings because we are community power?
Right.
But we will realize, that's what you're saying.
Where's Caleb's spreadsheet?
Thank you.
There is annual utility savings, and that is purchased power in large part in that column there.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Can I jump more into those? Do you have, I want to talk more about the numbers, just for fun. I'm not a numbers person, but, you know, why not? So, there's a baseline set, 2021, units of power, and then in 2030, we're going to take whatever we're paying for power in 2030 multiplied by the baseline year, and then compare that to what we actually, how many units of power we actually used in 2030 and multiply by that year's, right? We're using the same year for the multiplier on the cost, on the rate, right? We would have used 100, we thought we were going to use 100 baseline units, and that year's price was five cents per unit, and so, but we only used 90, so we saved 50 cents. Is that, my math is in my head. But we're not, we're not using the baseline year's rate for the calculation, correct?
The rates would be applied, sorry, the rates would be applied if the, five years from now, if the rates are different than what you have right now, the real rates would be applied at that time.
Okay, so it's just that baseline unit compared to the current cost?
Exactly. So the energy units, what is guaranteed right now, those are the energy units that will be guaranteed throughout the term.
Understood. So how does that apply to the O and M savings column, right? How do you baseline the O and M costs?
That's a very good question. So the operational savings is a little bit different, obviously, than the utility savings. We did use the same baseline year, which is, we collected about three years of data from the city. And based on, just those data are not essentially flat, right? So, you know, it's up and down. Yeah, it's where, there's a lot of variation throughout the last few years, that's what I can tell you. So the equipment, sometimes you have a lot more failure in one year than the others. So we did take those into account and we apply degradation across the term. So in some fashion, it's an estimation, but that's all we have to work with. So we did collect the three years, three to five years of data actually from the city, and we use those as estimation and build that across the term of the 20-year term.
And is that, is that limited to the actual equipment and assets that we're replacing as part of the project?
That's correct.
So you're just looking at our operation maintenance for our streetlights and for our AC units and for that sort of thing?
Exactly. So those data was provided in collaboration, like for this building with Roger and municipal building, so with the street lighting, with Stillwater Electric Utilities. So we have in-depth discussion with them and we came out with the data that they have provided and we agreed on those are reasonable and estimates.
Okay.
And one thing that should though be noted on the operations and maintenance is that we're looking at like labor and equipment escalation, which we have at 3%. And right now, we're seeing, you know, much, much higher. So this is really a conservative estimate that we feel is definitely going to be met. But right now, I mean, right now, we're seeing like 8% in equipment pricing every few months, and labor, you know, same. So just a little commentary to add there, it's a pretty conservative escalation.
Well, part of the question, and forgive me if this sounds rude in some way towards your company, but you guys say you'll guarantee the cost savings, right? You have to guarantee the cost savings, but you're also calculating the cost savings, right? So there's a concern as I look at it and go, okay, well, I mean, these are fudgeable numbers at some, to some degree, right? And so I guess my question is, is that determination made in collaboration? Do we have a chance to come back and say, well, actually, I don't think we did save that much in operations and maintenance? How much give and take is there there? Because, I mean, when you get to do the math, I imagine you probably don't pay out a whole lot of guarantee money on these contracts.
So there is, it's my understanding from City Attorney Carnley, who is not here tonight, that there is a part of the statute that it is incumbent upon the customer to go in and review the data. And Mrs. Cluck and I have done some of that with Zee and with Caleb, to really understand where they pulled the data, how they derived certain things. Of course, we are not engineers, we're accountants, and so that can be somewhat of a challenge at times. But just from our cursory review, it looked reasonable to us. We will do a more in-depth review mainly because we have to figure out how to account for all of this. And so, no, your criticism is well-taken, and I don't think, this is probably the first time you've all heard that. Tiffany?
It's not criticism, it's just a question. Do we have the ability to go back on a year-to-year basis and say, well, hey, actually, we think that number might not be true? Is that built into the way the system works?
Yeah, and I think ultimately, that's what the measurement and verification annual reporting is. And, you know, we are required by law to meet that guarantee, which is how these projects get financed and why this is widely-used mechanism. But I mean, to your point, like the O and M, we worked really closely and feel like this is a really pretty conservative amount. And, you know, even to the utility savings, back to your question, we actually used the lowest rate possible. So there should, you know, potentially be some additional savings, like when we're looking at the calculations and creating those baselines, we are putting a safety factor in there, you know, we have paid out, but ultimately, this is a conservative estimate so that at the end of the day, when we have to produce an M&amp;V report, we're achieving the savings that we guaranteed on the front end, and so that everyone feels really good about this partnership because it is a 20-year partnership, so we certainly don't want to tell you that you're going to have the savings and then in year two, you know, end up in litigation. That's not our goal.
Nor ours.
And to add on to that, you know, Tiffany was saying that we have made a conservative approach to the utility savings that we are generating and guaranteeing. There is going to be a set amount of utility savings produced by the project, and any excess over that guarantee goes right back to the city. So no matter what, the city is going to benefit from those measures, from those things that we're going to implement.
So that was one of my questions, actually, as we were having, is does the contract change or does the relationship or partnership change, like financially? If those do end up being really conservative and we exceed those savings, that goes back to the city for our?
That's right. So if it's positive, then the city is the beneficiary. If it's negative, then it's Johnson Controls that takes on that risk and that burden for the city.
So in one of these situations where it seems like a no-lose kind of a thing for the city, my question then becomes, where's you guys' cut? Right, where does Johnson Controls make money off of this contract? Right, I mean, if you're paying to pay us and we're, somebody's just like to ask the question because we want people to be clear that we're both, you know, this is a business proposition, right? So where does Johnson Controls make money off a contract like this?
So we make money very similar to a general contractor. So all of the work, the HVAC work, the lighting work, that is the performance of So all of the work, the HVAC work, the lighting work, that is, the performance of that is how we make money.
And selling us the equipment?
Correct.
Installing the equipment, that's where the?
Yes, sir.
Is there, and the financing, is that financing done directly by Johnson Controls or is that done through a financial institution?
So it's third-party and we helped the city with NRP to get the most attractive rate on behalf of the city, but we don't, we don't make any money on the financing.
Okay. 3.75 is a very attractive rate for money right now.
Yeah.
It is. We're, you know, we're, that was the, we're seeing 3.75. We'll see where we end and that, you know, annual net cash flow could potentially be impacted if it goes up. But, you know, at the end of the day, this is a budget-neutral proposition, so that was our goal to really come up with like some cushion.
So that was, I guess, my last question was just gonna be, this is what we think we can do and where we're going from here and from the staff's recommendation or the staff's request is to actually go forward and negotiate a formal contract where these numbers may actually change a little bit?
Potentially. And again, what you are going to see in a contract proposal will be units. It will be kilowatts and gallons, that. And then we apply the rates that are in effect at the point in time that, I mean, I would think we'd have to pick a point in time if it's March following the end of the calendar year or whatever. The, a couple of other things I want to point out to you, we are not making the PNI payment to Johnson Controls, as Tiffany alluded to. They have put out a request for proposal for us and we included many of our local bank partners here. So many, several of them have said, we'd love to help you, this is just not the right time for us. But hopefully, you know, they, we wanted to give them that opportunity and then they've gone to the major bank groups like Bank of America and I don't even know who all they went out to. Bank of America comes to mind because that's who we deal with. So we will be making, the way this, the money's gonna flow, the way I understand it is, we'll be making the annual debt service payments, then Johnson Controls is coming in. And again, remember, they are getting, selling us the equipment, but as Zee pointed out to me, probably a week ago or so, they've tried to make the best choice in equipment for our particular community. So not always will it be Johnson Controls.
That's correct. So the equipment that we look at, we look at performance, most because of the 20-year performance cycle of the equipment. So we look at equipment, we look at equipment lead time in this world that we live in right now. There has been a real challenge just getting the equipment that we need in time for installation. And we also look at cost, obviously, so we do go out to get the best price for the city as part of the RFP that we let out as well, so.
Can you talk a little bit about the implementation? So are we just gonna see a bunch of HVACs and light bulbs coming, like rolling into town immediately or is, how does that work?
Sure. So, yeah. So the lighting aspect of it is going to go pretty quickly, same thing as the water conservation. So those scope, because we want to realize those savings and those are shortest lead time items. Normally, within six to nine months, those will get completed. Lighting is gonna be a little bit more challenging just because of the scope involved, there's more than 4,300 poles between the streetlights and security lights. Some of that is in private property that we have to address. So those will take a little bit longer, so it can be up to maybe nine months, that's currently being planned. The equipment is the longest lead time item, so they could last 12, 15 months just because of the backlog and the challenges that we see across the industry. Most of the equipment, as Melissa alluded to, is gonna be made in Oklahoma. So the, some of there is gonna be GCI equipment, some of there is gonna be like Aions or Tentril units that is made in Oklahoma. That's what OIS utilizes for the most part. So we look at those and we'll select the best mix and match for the city based on what is needed.
And the lifespan of the equipment is long enough to meet the 20-year payment note?
That's correct. So the chillers and boilers are some of the major equipment that we are gonna put in, weighted useful life, those equipment is rated to be 25 years. The heat pumps is rated to be 18 to 23 years depending on what you pick and choose. So the majority of the equipment that we put in, those are major pieces of equipment that is gonna last in excess of 20 years, if maintained properly, obviously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions, councilors? What's your recommendation for us, Melissa?
The staff recommends that you authorize us to negotiate a contract for the performance of the work outlined in this presentation and to negotiate a financing package as well.
Well, I will just say thank you to all of you for coming tonight and for the work that you've done over several months at this point on this project. I know it's been involved and lots of stuff to crawl around and look at in our old facilities. Certainly, and I, you know, I don't ask questions to be critical, but wanna make sure that we're making a good financial decision for our community and certainly seems like a good mechanism and a good way to go about getting some of these much-needed improvements and replacements done in a way that Melissa and the finance team can stomach from a budget perspective on a year-to-year basis. That's the, that's the real challenge.
It is the real challenge, yes, it is.
So I do appreciate it. I really wanna ask about your, what seems to be vintage Stillwater lapel pin. I don't even have one of those, I'm really...
Oh, I will give you.
You've got the old spot ones? I've only got the new logo ones.
No, I've got one for you.
Wow, that's impressive. I just, I wanted to applaud you for it.
In one of our multiple meetings, I spotted them in a conference room and asked if I could have.
I didn't even know we had those. Man, nice, nice work.
Yes, sir.
Counselors, further questions for staff or action on the item?
Mayor, I would just remind you all that this is just to negotiate a contract. The contract itself will come before you. You'll have the opportunity to ask further questions about the details that are within that contract. City Attorney's Office will review it to make sure it complies with the specific statutory requirements for performance-based efficiency contracts. So not committing to this venture tonight necessarily.
Good reminder. Thank you, I appreciate that. Counselors?
Motion to accept staff recommendations?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendation and move forward with negotiating the contract. Please vote. That's approved with a vote of three to zero. Look forward to working with you all some more.
Thank you.
And thanks to the Renewable Energy Task Force for their work so far on this project and I'm sure their continued work to make sure our community moves forward in renewable energy initiatives. I just closed everything up like we're done. We already did everything under nine, so we'll move to item 10, appointments. We have two open seats or two seats on review for the Housing Authority Board. Both Ruby Manning and Roger Goze have expressed an interest in being reappointed. We have one additional application for a seat on that board. I think at this point, I will make a motion to reappoint both Ruby Manning and Roger Goze to the Housing Authority Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, those two individuals are reappointed to the Public Housing Authority Board and we appreciate their service. On the Airport Authority Board, we also have two seats that are expired and both Phil Thomas and Derek Davis have expressed an interest in continuing to serve on the Airport Advisory Board. So I'll move that both Phil Thomas and Derek Davis are reappointed to that board.
Second.
Move a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, Phil Thomas and Derek Davis are reappointed to the Airport Advisory Board. Thank you again for your service. Takes us to reports from the officers and the boards. Any reports from the Attorney's Office?
No report from the Attorney's Office.
Thank you. Ms. Reames?
Thank you, Mayor. If you haven't been paying attention, let me bring this to your attention, that we are gonna have an election on February the 14th. And, I know, I know. And the League of Women Voters, one of their wonderful services to our community is to hold a candidate forum. And they will be holding that forum here in our council hearing room on January 31st from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. If you don't wanna come down here, you can watch the forum on our Suddenly Channel 14 and our AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99 or on the city's YouTube channel. And just again, just to remind you, Election Day is February the 14th. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM and we're gonna be able to early vote on February the 9th and the 10th, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. At, well, I'm not sure. Patty, are we voting at the election board or are we back over election board? Okay.
And there's also a school bond election and a county sales tax on the ballot.
Right, and thank you for that segue. So the second thing that will be, that I'm going to remind you of, is the 3.8 cent sales taxes on the ballot again for Payne County. And the reason that sales tax is so important to the city is that is available to us to fund fire equipment. We generally use it to buy new fire trucks and the ladder truck was the last one that we bought with that money from the county. So we're hopeful that you as voters will go out and support us once again with that 3.8 cent sales tax. And then the school election.
And the school bond election as well. Thank you, Melissa. Vice Mayor Jaloski?
Get used to that, Mr. Mayor. Beginning tomorrow, our police department will begin the 8th Annual Citizens Academy. The academy provides members a unique look behind the scenes and firsthand experience into many areas of law enforcement and how our police officers serve the community. This is a multi-week educational course that includes real-life scenarios and a ride-along with an officer while on duty. For more information on the academy and how to apply for next year's academy, contact Lieutenant Lowe at terry.lowe@stillwater.org.
The coolest thing we do here. I was in Class 1 of the Citizens Police Academy and it was fantastic and gives you a great understanding of how our police department works and the professionalism of the Stillwater Police Department. I would encourage anyone who's interested to take part in that. Councilor Hawkins?
The city is accepting applications for a citizen representative to serve on the Reinvestment Plan Implementation Policy Committee. This committee focuses on the Stillwater Downtown Campus Link Project Plan. The committee reviews applications for compatibility with the project plan and the City of Stillwater Land Development Code and standards. They evaluate applications and make recommendations regarding eligibility of public financial assistance to the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. For more information and to apply online, go to stillwater.org/citizenboard.
Absolutely, thank you very much. I get the most exciting announcement of the evening. It's tax filing season and Stillwater Library is offering assistance. Community members can schedule appointments for free tax preparation assistance from the American Association of Retired Persons, AARP, by visiting library.stillwater.org/taxes, calling the library's help desk at 405-372-3633, extension 8106, or stop by the library in person during regular hours. There are a limited number of appointments available, so anyone with the ability to prepare their taxes by alternate methods should consider doing so to ensure enough appointments for those in our community who rely on this service the most. That takes us to the end of the Stillwater City Council agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn City Council, please vote. We voted three to zero, the City Council is now adjourned. This time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for January 23rd, 2023. Is there action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket?
Second.
Move a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, consent docket's approved. Item 5A, consider approving Amendment Number 4 to the Professional Service Agreement with Corolo Engineers. David Barth is here to talk to us about that.
Yes, good evening, trustees. Here to talk to you about, there we go, here tonight to talk to you about our raw water delivery and water treatment plant improvements project. And if you remember, in March of last year, we came to you and presented three alternatives for raw water storage. Remember, we have Call Lake that provides raw water to our water treatment plant, we have a single pipeline, and we have a 4 million gallon storage tank. And if for some reason the pipeline had an issue, we have 4 million gallons of raw water to deal with and that won't last us very long. So we worked with our consultants to come up with some alternatives and last March, you all authorized us to move forward with the Lake McMurtry alternative. So tonight, I'm here to move forward with that. This is a picture of the lake that I actually took today and I was trying to capture the intake, which is on the other side, and I couldn't see it. But anyway, it was still a pretty shot. So this was that alternative that we showed you last March. This is just the concept, this is in no way represents exactly what we're doing and that's what we're hopefully gonna get authorized here this evening. So this project is really two main components. It's a pump station that will be at Lake McMurtry and then approximately nine miles of transmission line that will travel from the water treatment plant to Lake McMurtry. And so we'll be able to take Call Lake raw water and we'll be able to transfer or convey that to Lake McMurtry and use that water for, use the lake for storage of that water and then if we need it or when we need it for repairing leaks or performing maintenance that we need to do on the Call Pipeline, we'll be able to pump water with the new pump station, pump raw water from Lake McMurtry back up to the water treatment plant. So the red line that you see there is the transmission line and I would just say that, you know, part of this next nine months is going to be, one of the activities is to figure out where that pipeline really needs to go. So I don't want anybody to be alarmed if they own property right there to think that the pipeline is coming through there. That's an idea, but there's other ideas that we will look at. I took these two pictures today as well. So one of the benefits, obviously, we're doing this because we wanna have a raw water storage and a backup supply for raw water for our plant in case something goes wrong with the Call Pipeline or the Call Pump Station or the intake at Call Lake and all of those components. But one of the side benefits is that we're gonna be able to keep the level in Lake McMurtry at a consistent level. We're gonna essentially try to keep the lake full. And you can see from these photos that the lake is, you know, we're in a drought and the lake is several feet below its normal level. And so you can see in one photo there to the right that the dock is just sitting on the beach. And anyway, I thought it was important to just note that for the recreational users at Lake McMurtry for boating, fishing, camping, that we will be able to keep the water level at a consistent level with this project. So obviously, we're only, we have water rights in Lake McMurtry, so does the City of Perry and we'll be working closely with them. And then of course, the, you know, the Friends of Lake McMurtry also have water rights for the recreational use. So as we get into this, we'll be reaching out to them and, you know, explaining the project and, you know, we think this is gonna be a win-win for everybody. So the scope of work for this first phase that we're doing with Corolo, we're going to do a condition assessment of the existing facilities. So the intake itself, the pipeline coming from the intake, which the City of Perry currently draws water from. We'll also look at a water quality blending analysis, we'll look at the water quality of Call Lake and when we mix that with the Lake McMurtry water, what does that look like and how does that affect treatment? We'll also look at a hydraulic evaluation, making sure that, you know, the pump station can adequately take the water back up to the water treatment plant and that the Call Pump Station will adequately take water out to Lake McMurtry. Like I mentioned before, a transmission main alignment study and we will also get our conceptual design out of this, so 30% design drawings. And as I mentioned, it should take about nine months. And we're hopeful that right after that, then we could roll right into preliminary and final design. We're planning on building the pipeline first because you can test a pipeline without a pump station, but you can't really test a pump station without a pipeline. So with that, does anyone have any questions before I share my recommendation?
Trustees? Trustees?
David, I noticed one of my questions was going to be, as we were looking at this project, um, that the idea of that water, the blending analysis, bringing two different, um, water bodies and kind of bringing them together. I just sat through a professional presentation the other day where municipality, that didn't go so well for them. Um, there's a whole book about it. So, um, I was just curious, as we go through that process, is it a, in the scope of work that you just described, is it a stepwise process where, I mean, what, like worst-case scenario, the blending doesn't go well, you know, are we still designing a pipeline that wouldn't work for-
Right. So that's-
The community.
It's a great question. Um, so we wouldn't even get to designing the pipeline at that point. That, that'll be one of the first things that we do. In fact, we've already kind of started. We've met with OWRB, we've met with DEQ, um, and we found out last week that DEQ now has been given, uh, the responsibility to manage water quality instead of the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. So there's some transfer of responsibilities there and they're still learning, um, how they're going to handle that, but they're very excited about this project. Um, yeah, water quality, you know, um, in 2000 and, I want to say 2005, the city had a water master plan done and actually it was a recommendation then to use Lake McMurtry for raw water, um, as a, a place for a backup supply, not necessarily to convey, um, Col Lake there, um, but, but we would essentially be mixing the two at the plant. And so, um, at that time, there didn't, there didn't seem to be an issue with that. We'll, but we'll still look at it and make sure that, uh, the water quality of, um, of Col and the water quality of McMurtry, one, doesn't impact our treatment, um, in an adverse way, but also the City of Perry because they're using Lake McMurtry as it is now. So when we put Col Lake water in there, um, what does that do for them? So yeah, we'll, we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Okay. And it is that kind of stepwise-
Yes.
It's a stepwise consideration.
Yeah, an iterative process.
Will they look at, so we're looking at it from a drinking water quality. I would assume from a natural resource perspective that the, like, Lake McMurtry could also be impacted or changed by bringing different type of water. Will they also look at that?
Um, I'd, I'd have to go back and look specifically. I, I, I don't know if that's specifically covered, um, but I, yes, I think we will want to make sure that we're not impacting, um, you know, the ecology of the lake, I guess.
Yeah.
If that's the correct term.
Yeah, I would think that that would be-
I mean, I know Lake McMurtry's had algae issues, so I'm hopeful that this will help with that. Um, I know, um, both of the lakes, I think, have zebra mussels, so there's not a concern there other than we just have to, um, try to control that because they can clog up your intakes and that sort of thing. Beyond that, I, um, you know, we'll, we'll have our consultants look at, uh, everything to make sure this is the right fit.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume DEQ has those kinds of standards or all built into whatever permits they're going to have to give us to actually do this project in the first place, right?
Exactly. We'll have an engineering report and they'll have to permit the project. We'll have to, uh, you know, the, it's interesting that putting water from one lake into another is kind of on our, on our system. Like we'll have to have a meter and we'll measure how much, um, water we're putting in the lake and making sure that we're not exceeding our water right or, or exceeding what we've put in.
Yeah.
But it's also interesting because, um, you can take, our, so our water, water right is, um, 968 acre feet per year, but you can take it all at once, um, I guess, as long as you don't exceed in that year. So 968 acre feet is roughly 315 million gallons. So if we needed 315 million gallons, we could, you know, draw it as fast as we could out of the lake. But, but just to let you know, that would only drop that lake about one foot. So you wouldn't, you probably wouldn't see it.
Is the permitting or is that, is the DEQ a part of the conver, like in this scope of work, will they be a part of the conversa? I know you, we've talked with them. Will they be a part of the conversation throughout the scope of work so that we're making decisions that they're going to kind of be good with?
Yes.
Okay. And that we're not spending money on things that they might not end up being good, good with?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they will be, uh, definitely an integral part of the conversation.
Well, I've told this story, um, about six times in DC last week to different representatives and federal agencies and, um, the word is out that Stillwater is working on this project. So I'm excited to see us move forward. Hopefully, you know, I mean, there are certainly some-
Well, it's the work that we need to do, right?
Yeah. We've got to kind of be, be ready and, and those folks are, you know, looking at what we're doing and, and keeping up with the project and, uh, hopefully, you know, finding us some help with the cost of this project. I'm, I'm, uh, interested to hear your recommendation on-
Yeah.
-what we need to do on that front here.
Sure. So, and, and the good thing is, um, you know, we did get some coronavirus ARPA funding, um, into payments over the last, I guess, 15 months. And so we're actually now tapping into that, uh, into those funds with this, um, project. So, um, my recommendation is a motion to approve contract amendment number four to the professional services agreement with Corolo Engineers to modify scope of services to include study and conceptual design phase services for additional raw water storage at Lake McMurtry. Authorize the general manager to sign the amendment and approve the budget amendment appropriating $1,025,000 for the project, which includes $595,960 for basic services, $335,817 for additional services and a contingency.
Thank you, David. Trustees?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That's approved with a vote of three to zero. Thank you, David. Any reports from the officers or the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move a motion and a second to adjourn SUA. Please vote. Vote of three to zero, SUA is now adjourned. This time I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for January 23rd, 2023. Is there action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket?
Second.
Move a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the consent docket is approved. No further items on the agenda. If there are no reports, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move a motion and a second. Please vote.[1780.62]